Welcome everybody to Town Hall Meeting number 89, March 19th, 2024. And today we're joined by Judith, Taffo, Clement, Curtis, Easy, Gorga, Ian, Anjeka, Quotogi, Vanessa, William and Immortal. Thanks all for up and on, it's great to have you here, hope you're doing well. As you can see on the screen share, a bit of an outline of today's agenda. Starting off with a couple of mentions, then we have a section reserved for the archival workgroup on meeting summaries. And then after that, we'll discuss collaboration with the Singularity Net Foundation on community growth and engagement. If there happens to be any time left after that, we'll have room for open topics. Let's see how that goes. Then first a quick reminder on what the Ambassador Program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a whole bunch of people that align with the mission and vision of Singularity Net and want to spread the word on it. There are self-organizing workgroups on a variety of topics which you can join. If you are interested in joining, do hop onto our Discord server and check the Getting Started channel. That'll have all information to get you started. Moving right on. Two events this week, one took place earlier today, was a workshop by Nick Allmand for the Supervisory Council. And that allows for asynchronous contributions as well. I'll put the link in chat if it will allow me. Copy link. It's... Where did the chat go? There we go, it's in chat now. Yeah, as you can see there, it's a whole bunch of tables with questions and feel free to enter your thoughts on any of the topics. Don't have to do the full page, any contribution is very welcome. This session earlier today will be followed up next week, but then it will be on the US time slot, so right after the Town Hall. And then also a shout out to another Town Hall, the Deep Funding one, Thursday at 19 UTC. Quick check if anybody in the room has any agenda items for that one, because I personally do not have those right now.
Yeah, it's gonna be two breakout rooms. The one is gonna be on reviewing the branding manual of deep funding and one breakout rooms is gonna be on polls, the polls that we wanna have in deep funding round four, as well as request the process for requests for proposals. So those two breakout rooms, I believe.
Hmm, cool. On that secondary, second topic, there's also a poll going out, both on Twitter, Telegram, on socials in general, about the current polls. So if you have an opinion on that, do check out the deep funding socials and then vote. Then a quick shout out to a livestream that happened two hours ago-ish on Open Card Hyperon. Was with Ben Gerzl and Matty Clay and Alexi. And Haley was hosting. It's a really good one. I would advise checking out the Singularity Net YouTube and yeah, watching that back. Pretty in-depth, but also yeah, it had a nice balance, I would say, between in-depth technical stuff and a bit more general topics. Then I'd like to share that the core contributor role is set up. And we'll have a first topic for votes on the budget for Q1. And on that, coming Thursday during Treasury, Taffo, could you maybe share the shorts, the outline on what the plan is?
Yeah, so the quarter one, what you mentioned there with one of the agenda items, like discussing how could we close it up with one kind of rule? As I understand, Peter wants to use core contributors role and to try to run something and Q1 was something that was also mentioned in the comments group. So having a some forum or some way to initiate that thing is basically one of the discussion points, the minimum requirements to launch it. And then that was also over when we were in the Panama, there still was a call and they recognized some kind of main questions. They have a treasure grid, so we could quickly go over them. And initially, I preferably would like to talk about quarter two budget request requirements. So bringing a bit of like what to expect already on the table to prepare us. So that's I'm gonna drop a message in Zoom chat and that's about it.
Awesome, thanks. Yeah, looking at the clock, Q2 is closing in, two weeks remaining, pretty much.
Oh yeah, copy waste from Maribor.
Yeah, just above that, I've just stuck in the chat, there's a document doing the rounds on what the new core contributors decision-making process might be. There's not been a load of comments yet, so please jump in and add yours.
Nice. Yes, indeed. This week won't have a governance session. Next week will. So I hope by that time there's more comments on it, so we can incorporate them into the document. Alright, that's it as far as mentions go. That does bring us to the first topic of today, being the meeting summaries by the Archive Workgroup. Vanessa, I think I can give you the word on this.
Yeah, actually, could you give Essie a screen share capability? Can you make her co-host, because she's sharing a presentation? We just thought, because people are using the Archive Workgroups meeting summaries tool loads now. We thought it would be quite cool to just do some tips and tricks for good meeting summaries. So I'm gonna hand over to Essie.
Hi, everyone. Hello.
Hey. The floor is yours.
What?
The floor is all yours.
Right, thank you, thank you. So just give me a moment, let me share my screen.
There's quite some new joiners all of the sudden. Welcome all. We're just waiting a second for Easy to share screen. And there we go. You are currently muted. Not sure if you're speaking.
Yeah, so we're talking about tips and tricks for fabulous meeting summaries, so that every workgroup is able to, you know, share their summaries much more better. So obviously, it depends a bit on your workgroup and given your templates, but so we feel that yeah, some stuff, that's what's included in a summary. So number one is tags. Tags are, as probably know, tags will make it easier to train an LLM to search the corpus. So it's great that people are starting to use more extensive tagging lately. For example, an education guild meeting from the end of February, as you can see here, they actually made use of tags and it was pretty cool. So a lot of tags is just the start of the process. After a while, we will refine it into a tag taxonomy. One that's created from the ground up by the whole community, but for now, we need as many tags as you can add. So we're gonna talk about the emotion tags. Some people wonder why we include this. Yes, they're subjective, but then there's nothing wrong with that. So how a meeting felt is part of what happened at that meeting, right? So if we can capture it, it brings our history to life and gives information that readers won't really get in other ways. So the second thing that you want to add in your meeting summaries is dates. So we need to include dates on your materials wherever you can. For example, let's look at an old summary from way back. So this summary from Video Workgroup and as you can see, just have monthly update on it. So it was so, but they did not say like which month, so it's kinda like, you know, so we can't really tell when it was from the context of where it's placed in the archives. So that's not ideal. If material ever becomes dissociated from its archival context, we are stuck and it would be super difficult to trace it back. So and even if it seems silly or obvious, include the year. Thirty years from now, when people read the material in the archives, it won't be so obvious what year it was. And another point is we are an international community, so the best date format would to avoid confusion over the different ways dates are written in different countries is probably with the months in words like 25th August 2024. So the next thing is documents. So workgroups are already writing great summaries of what happened in their meetings. But often, the real detail is in their working documents and other resources. For example, let's take a very old summary from May last year. So I can sense here, there's a portion that says discussed and voted for CJ Frankie's proposal. And also this part for decision, discuss and voted on CJ Frankie's proposal, it was accepted. But you can see that Video Workgroup discussed the proposal by CJ Frankie, but we don't know what the proposal was. A link to a relevant doc would capture the details. So when you mention a doc or other resource in your summary, include a link to it. In the tool, there's space to give the title of the resource followed by the link. This is better than an embedded link, because an AI search tool will be able to find it more easily. Plus, it's more readable for humans, too. Another super useful thing to include is a header on a doc that says when it was created and who did it. For example, here's a recent doc from Onboarding Workgroup. So here you can see created by Lady Tempess Law for Onboarding Workgroup 2029, January 2024. Then once you have your doc and you have added it to a summary, don't delete it. Most documents in the Ambassador's Program are not held centrally. They are held on the Google Drive of different workgroups. In other words, each of us holds a little bit of the Ambassador's history. We call this a distributed archives. It's quite a cool thing. So even if you create a version two of a doc you're using, keep the old one, especially if it is full of comments. They are part of the story of the doc and of the decentralized participatory way it was created. So in Archive Workgroup, we're currently working on how to archive and manage docs better. One idea is periodically exporting a backup of the data held in a doc, including the comments to a public repo as the source of truth, which will also make the data open source. It will need a bit of Google API wrangling, but we are working on it. So decisions versus actions. So it's important to pull out decisions and action items in your summary and add them in the relevant fields. Then you can track them, so you don't forget about them. So first, what's the difference between decisions and actions? A decision is simply something you agreed on in the meeting and action is something that was assigned to someone to do. It will have one or sometimes more assignees and a due date. Tracking your decisions and especially your action items can help a workgroup to be accountable and ensure you don't lose those things you said you would do. The meeting summary tool can help you do this. So now over to Vani to see how. Thank you. And before I hand over to Vani, I've sent a couple of workgroup leaders or people in charge of documentation, sent them some stuff. So can you look at your DMs and I'll be expecting your response. Thank you.
Brilliant. If I can just really quickly screen share, I think, oh, yeah, I think I need to be co-host, Peter. I just thought, thank you, I just thought I'd show you a couple of little things that maybe people who haven't used the tool, the documentation tool, very much might not be aware of. So I'm gonna go to submit meeting summary and I'm gonna select Archives Workgroup, because we've got our next meeting tomorrow, shameless plug, at 13:00 UTC. And I just thought I'd show you what I do to prep for documenting a meeting. Because I think one of the things with the tool is it's good if you can, rather than writing a doc and then transferring it to the tool, we intend it to be used so that you do it straight in. And that makes it so much quicker and easier. And so these are some tips that I've found. Obviously, the first thing you do to make a new summary is you change the date. And then what I tend to do is I, well, just to explain that what you're seeing here is everything that was from your last meeting summary is already populated. And you can make use of that to make the whole process easier. So what I generally do is I take out people who I don't know if they're coming or not. And I leave it just with the people who I know are definitely coming and then you can add anybody else when they arrive at the meeting. I've assumed you're coming, Peter, I probably shouldn't. There we go. With the decisions, it's quite rare that there is something that you need to carry over from a decision. Once it's done and made, it's done. So generally, I will, you know, I usually do check, but I'll remove them all and get ready to type in the next decision that is made in the meeting. As for the action items though, this is quite a cool way of tracking what you're up to. What you're seeing here is any decision, sorry, any action item that wasn't resolved in the last meeting. So at the time of the last meeting on the 6th, this was not yet finished. It was unresolved, but I happen to know now that it's done, so I can tick it off. Same with this one, I can tick that off. This one might actually not be done, so I'm gonna leave it unchanged and change it in the meeting. But obviously, you can just go through and then you can start your meeting by going through your action items and going, yeah, I know this one's done, I know this one's done. What's the status on this one? And you can just quickly change it if, or whatever it's gonna be. And then at the end of the meet, at the end of the list, that's where you start adding new action items. And this gives you a really nice track of what you've done. For instance, if we look in the archives, this is the meeting summary for Archives Workgroup's last meeting on the 6th. And you can see that there was an action item there that we ticked off as done and it doesn't appear in the list anymore. So once it's done and ticked off as done, it's finished and it's tracked in the Gitbook. And if you wanted to look back and make sure that decisions and action items that you've done had been followed through on, you could do that. And then generally what I'll do is I will take out all the emotion tags, because you don't know what a meeting's gonna feel like until you're in it. And I'll take out the tags for things that are not particularly on the agenda. Might need to add some in later, but say for example, I know we've got nothing on documenting BGI on that agenda, so I'll take it out. Alright, so I hope that helps as a way of just showing you how you can use the tool to keep track and to kind of follow up on what you've said you'll do. Right, if we've got any questions, Anjeka's here, he can field them.
Thanks a lot for that, both for the explanation and the tutorial, let's say. Any questions in the room?
Vani?
Hello.
Yeah, could you share the link to the tool you just described?
I certainly can, yeah, I'll put it in the chat right now.
Okay, then.
I do have a question, that kind of, you alluded to like, but it's the importance for, well, proper archiving would be LLM usage. So is there any, let's say, projections on the plan there?
Yeah, there's quite a lot of progress going on and I guess if you, I'm obviously gonna say this, aren't I? Go and look in the archives, the summaries from Archives Workgroup and you can see. But also have a look in our GitHub board, because there's some quite cool documentation from Ubio, who's been working on this with us. And what we're looking at, I think, is rather than trying to get an AI to tag it for us, we're looking at whether it can apply human-generated tags. Because we found some issues with how it, if you try and let an AI tag material, it kind of quite often goes astray. So we feel like the tags need to be human-generated, but we need to see whether an AI can apply them, looking at a summary and go, oh, that should be tagged with this. And it kind of looks quite exciting, it looks as if it could.
Alright, awesome.
I can see a question from Gorga in the chat, this archive tool is a replacement for DWork, right? Nah, not at all, DWork is still being used. This does something quite different. This basically summarizes what happens in meetings, so that we have an archival record of it. People might kind of think, ugh, why is that important? But I really think that this community is historically exciting and we're changing things. There's every possibility that people will want to know who we were and what we did in 50 years from now. So that's why we're doing it.
I see an opportunity here to integrate the archive through the Treasury when somebody wants to skip the recording of participation in DWork. So if somebody's using both of these tools, it could perhaps differentiate the host and participants from the meeting summary and then don't you have to use the DWork to report that. But yeah, that's something you implement in Treasury, so trying these calls.
Yeah, anything, saving double efforts would be very welcome, I feel. Any other questions or comments in the room on the topic? Then I can only assume it was very clear. Awesome. Thanks a lot for sharing. And let me quickly check if I'm correct. Yeah, 13 UTC tomorrow is the first bi-weekly Archive Workgroup session.
That's right, and the link's on the calendar, we'd love to see you there.
Alright, let me hop back to screen sharing. And that brings us to the second main topic of today. And that's the interaction, collaboration between the Ambassador Program and the Foundation. And specifically on the topic of community growth and community engagement. And for this, I have the honor of giving the word to Judith. I guess I'll stop screen sharing as well.
Doesn't matter. Hi, everyone. Throughout the past weeks, we had a lot of conversations with the Foundation, with the spin-offs and also in the community around the Ambassador's Program about the role of the ambassadors. And one reoccurring theme that came up over and over again was that it simply doesn't make sense to have the Ambassador Program be so connected from the Foundation and have them do completely separate work from the Foundation's needs. We had a meeting with Loic last week and we had the idea to establish a group of people that are interested in doing very classical ambassador's work. Specifically, community engagement. So going out to the wider community and engaging them with the Singularity Net brand. That would be, for example, creating games and contests, organizing local events during NFT hunts, X Spaces, community spotlights, brand activations, I mean, anything that would engage the wider community with the Singularity Net brand. Make them feel connected to the brand, involve them with the brand, get them connected to the mission and maybe join the mission. So it's not, it wouldn't be work necessarily connected to the Ambassador Program. Like the end goal wouldn't necessarily be onboard people into the Ambassador Program, although obviously it can be. But the main goal would be to go out to the wider community and basically to strangers to start engaging them with the Singularity Net brand. So now the question is, how many people are interested in doing this type of work? The Foundation would really love to have a dedicated team that is passionate about that kind of work, that wants to work with the Foundation on a regular basis to come up with that strategy. So we're not talking a top-down approach where they tell us what to do and we have to implement it, or they come up with the strategy and we have to implement it. It's very much, we work with them in collaboration and together to develop the strategy and then also implement it together, so to say. So we're looking for a group of people that wanna do this very classical ambassador work. This would likely replace the Marketing Guild. I would probably not keep the Marketing Guild running, but that's a different discussion. So yeah, the first questions for the room would be, who would be interested in joining those kind of efforts in the meetings with the Foundations? Do you have any thoughts about what we should name this group? Should this name, should this group have a specific name, yes or no? Or should it just be called Marketing Guild? What do you think about the change in direction of working closer with the Foundation? Do you have any concerns around it? And yeah, do you wanna be part of it? So I'll, I'll open it up to the room for any questions or any, any feedback. And if you don't wanna speak up tonight, technically you can also just message me and say, yeah, I'd be interested. And then, I mean, we do not have the details set up yet in terms of when those meetings would be, how many of these meetings we will have. And how exactly it's gonna be compensated? Will it be compensated by the Foundation or will we use the Marketing Guild? Budget, these are all still discussions we have to have, but yeah, opening up to you for first thoughts and reactions and ideas.
There's quite some people at least indicating interest in the chat.
Yeah, and also it's not, obviously not a must. Should it be the case that no one is that interested? The Foundation would also be happy to recruit a new group, but I'm assuming there is interest. but I'm assuming there is interest from us ambassadors, so please let us know if there is.
I think there is, um, yeah, and I just want to add to that, um, in my mind, um, while it might be a bit different from what we've done so far, um, because there's not too much top-down directive from foundation side to ambassador program. Um, in my mind, this would be one of the very first steps of, of just cementing that, that relation and getting that, uh, way more intensified over time. Um, yeah, and building out, uh, community and focusing on community engagement seems like a great fit for, for getting that started. But I'll give it to the room as well.
I feel like a huge part of ambassador program has done like outreach into totally clueless people and getting them into like Singularity Net community. It's just maybe that, like, from this year or so, there are more people who have joined to, to basically, yeah, learn something new and then try like new opportunities. And, but still, it kind of gives this opportunity for them to learn about Singularity, so I'm not quite sure we have been off the path. It's just a different angle how to get new audience.
I'm not sure we've been working that much on outreach and community engagement, we've been working a lot on, I mean, we have a whole group around treasury, we have archiving, we have people that do stuff around D Work and onboarding, but that's all very much ambassador program-related, like, building the structures of the program and making sure the program is running. That was, I think, a large part of what we've been doing, I'm not sure if we, I mean, we've done some outreach, obviously, but I
But the people who joined to create the program, they weren't part of Singularity Net before, so they are the new, new people who joined and saw fit that this is a network to help and establish structures.
Obviously, but we're talking very low numbers, right? That joined the program in the past years. And I think what the, what the foundation would like to see is just us having a lot more impact, because they know we have the capacity to have a lot more impact. And I mean, yeah, we onboarded, I don't know, fifty people into the program, and thirty of them are now core contributors, so I don't know how many people we onboarded over the year, but I think they would like to have a group established that just goes out there and is very loud and active in the community and that reaches a lot of people. Rather than bringing in the odd person into the ambassador program, which is, I mean, it's not nothing, and it's a lot of work as well, and it's meaningful, but, yeah. I think we have room for growth and impact. Guillermo is next, I believe, yeah? Go for it. Guillermo, you, are you there? Oh, you're having network issues.
Hey, everyone, I don't know if you can receive me. Connection, so, goes, so, do you guys hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, yeah, so the, the difference between engagement and contribution or collaboration, so different objective, different targets, so I, I don't think there's overlapping, I, I see uh, some opportunities to, to get people, so, so branding is one thing, and what we are doing here is different. Uh, but of course, having a first knowledge, understanding of what is the Singularity Net, what we are trying to achieve here, uh, uh, different things, uh, and having a group of, of, uh, let's see, shepherds that going, gonna go out, uh, to reach people and talented individuals outside our scope, uh, uh, yeah, having more people is always good, it's always a good idea, uh, so different objectives, and, um, yeah, what we're having here, there's not a discussion, it, it, there's a lot of work, as what, for example, was showing Vani and Sukre on the archival, who are building tools, we're building a structure to then receive all these people, you know, so you don't have a country, then you don't, on borders and food and, uh, resources, then, then you can bring the people. So I think we are ready now to open the door to all of this. And I, I believe that it will be great, uh, I mean, to help, I think, uh, Inez would be interested in helping with this. If there's a clear objective, um, uh, we should, uh, some buzzers, we should support this and, and help you guys, uh, with whatever you guys need, at the end, it, it's, it's a clear message, it's a clear, uh, strategy brief, uh, creative brief, and, uh, it, it is branding, so it should be easier. But let's be clear on this, I think it's very, it's very important to understand that uh, quantities doesn't represent, uh, quality. And, uh, what are we reaching the people for, what are we expecting?
Breaking up a bit.
Uh, are very important on building this, uh, before moving forward, but, uh, yeah, so it's a good idea if we know why and how. Yeah, I'm, I think I'm done, but understanding why and how it will be crucial.
We lost you for a little bit, but I, I think we got the overall point. Um, Vanessa?
Yeah, I love what you're saying there, Guillermo, about the why and the how. One thing that's always occurred to me about this kind of outreach is that we need to be reaching people who might be interested in what SNET's doing, but they're not involved at all, but they kind of tie in with the stuff that we're all doing in our workgroups. For instance, you know, Archives workgroup has in mind to reach out to the archiving community and go, look what we're doing here. And I think the same is probably true of, you know, R and D, reaching out to developers in other fields and going, look what we're building. I think this is the kind of thing that I would love to see happening, and I'm just wondering, is that what you're picturing, Judith? Is that the kind of thing, or are we looking at people who are already on the fringes of SNET, or both?
I think both, I think it's not a either or question, it's and, like, it's as much as possible, it's all of it. I mean, outreach will take a million different shapes and forms, to be honest. The, the main objective is to basically humanize the brand and get people connected to Singularity Net. I mean, it's, it's a tech brand, it's an AI brand, so a lot of people are scared, a lot of people are disconnected, a lot of people don't want anything to do with it. And we wanna change it, we wanna make it fun to engage with the brand. We wanna have people experience Singularity Nets and get on board with the mission, and there's a million ways to do it. Um, so, yeah, all of it, as much as we can. So, yeah, maybe if you can send me a message just saying I'd be interested, so I can get a better count of the numbers, or you can, if you wanna throw up your hands now and I can count it, we can also do that. Um, actually, send me my, oh, no, send me a message, send me a message, so I have proof. I have proof. If you're interested, and then I'll, I'll take that information back to Loic and tell him, yeah, we do have a group. And then I'm assuming we would get started with the first meeting fairly fast, maybe as soon as next week. Um, but, yeah, does anyone have any concerns around creating this new group? And should those be called ambassadors, ambassadors? I don't know, what should we call this group?
That's a good question, yeah, I mean, there's always, uh, naming things is, is sometimes taking way too much, uh, time, uh, I would say, but yeah.
This does seem like a natural evolution to the process and a necessary component, so are we, are we going with core contributors? And so we could make the distinction between ambassadors versus core contributors, that ambassadors might be an appropriate name.
I wouldn't mind it in itself, but the only consideration there that, that kind of makes me not directly say yes to this would be that, um, seeing where the ambassador program, if you introduce a role which is called the ambassadors, um, this kind of creates this, this feeling of higher priority, let's say, and that's something I would, yeah, preferably not have.
Yeah, but ambassadors can feel like the outside people can see that, all the ambassadors, and they can come to them first and and assume they are in control, and maybe it's a good thing because they are outreach body. And if they get intel and try to, hey ambassador, I have this great workgroup idea, can you forcefully enforce it then? Then, then they realise, well, actually, ambassador program is still run by the whole program, not by ambassadors, and they just have one role, part of outreach. So I'm not really.
Will, will the ambassadors have any distinct privileges in terms of voting or, uh, in terms of decision-making? If not, and it's only specific to outreach, then, uh, that seems to be aligned with, I think, the definition of ambassador. But if they don't have any special privileges, then I wouldn't think that they would be, um, at a different level, or perceived at a different level, per se.
Their privilege could pick knowledge.
They're gonna have privileges.
With access to maybe a real information before a blog post gets announced, maybe some like this kind of information, but yeah, not sure of decision-making power or anything like that. It's getting mixed up, and we keep it pure, keep it simple, then we can do it.
Well, something I'd like to add there is, um, that's one of the, in light of the core contributors', uh, role, one of the very first, uh, governance topics there is also on the naming of things. Um, yeah, that hasn't been settled yet, whether to go for core contributors, long-term contributors, ambassadors, um. Yeah, just wanted to, to add that for context. And on, on benefits, it kind of makes me wonder, um, something we've, um, at least from my side, that, that's been lacking a little within the ambassador program is that whatever we do, it's always reactive to the outputs, um, created by the foundation marketing. Um, so in a way, we never have the, the, the facts before they get pushed out, so this, yeah, it's like, well, this thing is happening. And then, yeah, what do we do? We also write a blog about the same topic. Um, so where I'm going and, and with potential benefit or, or something to consider within this, uh, conversation uh, would be the potential of NDAs. But not saying that's a benefit by definition, but that, that, yeah, something to flesh out, maybe?
Yeah, I think another question is also, this meeting should probably definitely not be on the Singularity, Singularity Net calendar, like, it shouldn't be a public meeting, obviously. So I'm, I'm not sure what to do, um, with, with the naming of it. If we keep it as Marketing Guilds, do we just make it a private Marketing Guild, or, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, um, Judith? Can, can I say something?
Yeah.
You say, I wanna, um, maybe mine is gonna be more like an inquisition and a contribution, so first I'd like to ask if this, uh, this new ambassador's, uh, program is gonna override, overrun the existing marketing guild? And I also see this as, um, more or less a marketing arm for Singularity Net. So maybe, if you're, if you're speaking, is there a way to maybe like introduce, um, the marketing circle into this? Uh, moving forward, let's say, persons who get, um, funded in the marketing pool in successive funding rounds, is there where we could, you know, introduce them to this? Or those who've been funded previously, we could find a way to ingratiate their products or whatever they've done or their activities into this, so, um, I'm just saying, maybe we could think in that direction?
Sorry, what funding rounds are you talking about?
Um, I'm talking about deep funding, maybe persons who, um, in marketing pools who come up with project.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there a way we can incorporate these things into this ambassador, you know, program moving forward? When we're trying to create here?
I'm not sure, I never had this conversation with anyone, I mean, we can mention it, but I think the original idea was not to have it funded by deep funding, no?
Okay, 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 that's fine.
Um, Guillermo and Tevo, I'm not sure who was first.
Go for it, Tevo, I, I love you, man, I wanna hear you, I miss you guys.
Okay, um, Kieran actually brought out a good point that we might still want to keep the marketing guild in ambassador program too, and then you have like two, two versions of them, one is a workgroup with Singularity Net being, uh, and that's more like a focus group, but then still have like a public version for those who are generally like using and leveraging the ambassador program itself and onboarding people in here, where I guess the workgroup will be also specialized in knowing how to onboard to the different spin-offs and not just ambassador. So, yeah, just mentioning that. And the calendar stuff totally makes sense, if it's a private director. You have had this run with ambassadors only, and that was confusing, listen.
Yeah, so you're saying the, the marketing guilds should be kept so it can be focused on doing basically the community engagement and marketing for the ambassador's program only?
But, of course, if somebody steps up and leads that, that's a capacity.
Yeah. I'm not sure how much more work we need to do, like, and, and the marketing guilds for the past weeks, we came up with a new, new website description that's hopefully gonna go up on the Singularity Net site. Um, we came up with a new description for the town hall, uh, ambassador town hall meetings that we can tweet out and, um, a whole bunch of changes, so I mean, these tweets are gonna go out regularly, I, I'm not sure how much you need to keep a, a full guild running, um. I'm not sure how much marketing we need for the ambassador program only, I mean, is.
Even if it's like once per month people need, it's already a, probably it's a space, for example, what Kellam mentioned, like, somewhere else in deep funding, or like in Gatalis, some proposals get funded and doing marketing, you can say, you also do something in here, check, beat us in next month in this marketing pool call, or.
Yeah, yeah, but I would also think that a lot of the commu, like, since we're gonna be engaging the wider community engagement strategy, that some of those activities are also gonna be geared towards the ambassador program, like, we're not just gonna, it's not just all gonna be foundation stuff, like, you know, we can probably just do it together. Like, some's gonna be SNET and spin-off related, and some's gonna be ambassador program related, some of the activities we're gonna come up. I, I'm not sure if we need two separate groups, but yeah, let's think about it. But we can probably do it in that one group. I would assume.
Hey, so I'm gonna go now.
So I'm gonna go now.
Um, um, I, I don't, uh, as more, as, as I listen, probably it's, it's good to have something written down, um, that's probably the objectives get mixed, um. If you keep a branding strategy to spread the word of singularity, uh, marketing force would be enough, um, I don't get the idea of, of rebranding something to take that name to something different while it's just a marketing effort. That it will end up really in, you have two ways to spread a message, through people or through media placement. Uh, you can try both, um. Uh, you can try both, um. And you will have results and understanding of what is the best usage of that budget, let's say. But, uh, yeah, first you need to clear a clear object, objective on what you're trying to reach, uh, Duke. I see probably there's, uh, some dancing ahead, uh, and. Yeah, uh, to be clear on the objectives, on how we can be useful and not used. Uh, it's probably a good thing to do. Yeah, I think that's, that's all on my side.
What do you mean by being used? Who's using us?
It's exactly what I, what I meant. There's no, there's no guessing or. It's, something is to use a tool and, uh. And get usage, uh, get you good use of it or, or not, uh, we. Say we can put, uh, a lot of efforts in directions and decisions to. To create a structure and, uh. Yeah, and that, then that case, uh, would be using with different objectives without, uh. Having us, uh, consider us in consideration or to participate.
All right, well. If anyone has any other thoughts on how they would like the collaboration with the foundation to look like, because there's a few different ways. That collaboration can happen, we can have group meetings, we could have one or two. Representatives from the ambassador program, meet with the foundation and then have them take the task to the ambassadors. Um, it could be very small meetings, it could be bigger meetings, it could be something entirely different. If you have any thoughts on how exactly you want the collaboration to look like and how often, then you can also. Let us know here or you can message me and, yeah, I'll have another meeting with Loic. Um, probably beginning of next week.
Sorry, Judith, guess you have an unanswered question? Yeah, you asked, um, us to message you for those who are interested. And then you also talked about messaging you again now, so I wanna ask, um, is it on Discord or do we tap here in the chat box?
On Discord. On Discord, I'm just seeing in the chat that there's seventy-nine messages, I'm not sure where they all of a sudden came from, um. But I haven't, I don't think I've received any. Private, oh yeah, I have received private messages. Okay, I'm ideally on Discord.
Yeah, because I, I know I did send a private message, um, in the last, um, work, there's a work group meeting, I attended, so I, you need to add me to the work. And then adding any replies, so I was wondering what to respond to it on Discord. Or this, any other channels you respond, uh, a bit faster than Discord.
Well, cool, the marketing guild channel is available, uh, and so. Don't turn it private, that's what I'm talking about, we need to, at least one open space where people can come and say. Hey, actually I want also to be part of that group even if it's two months later. So use marketing cool chat, I guess.
I think in general it would be good to also. Put it somewhere on this, this whole, um, proposal request, uh, put it somewhere on Discord, cause well, not everybody in the group is in Discord, of course.
Yeah, true. Also, Loic ma- made very clear that these are not gonna be chit chat meetings, they're gonna be very much work meetings. Like coming up with the strategy right on, right on the spot and like, they need to be very productive. They're gonna be. Yeah, we're gonna be there to work. And ideally, the people that are in this group, they wanna be there long term. And not drop in and out. That's currently the problem we have in the marketing guild, people are joining one week and then not the next week, and then one week and then not the next week, and it's extremely. Difficult to come up with anything consistent. Or do consistent work when you never have an idea of how many people are joining, but. Yeah, I'm seeing that I'm already receiving lots of messages from you, so. Have no doubts, we're gonna be able to pull it off.
Yeah, I imagine on, uh, on group size. Kind of makes sense to first have, maybe a, a bigger call with all interested? Like it's, like how do you filter before that, like, yeah?
Yeah, true. All right, well, we're two minutes past time.
That's an interesting topic and, uh, hopefully, um, at least from my side, hopefully, uh. Just a very small first step towards way more collaboration over time. Um, one thing I do want to reserve maybe a couple of minutes for is, um, it's actually also, um. Connected to, um. Community gain, uh, engagement and, and outreach, uh, and that would be, um. The experiment we're doing right now with, uh, Zili campaign, um. Perhaps if I may put you on the spot, Kanichi, could you tell us a little bit about it?
Um, yeah, definitely, uh, definitely. So hi everyone. And, um, yeah, the Zili is doing, uh, very well, actually, so let me. Get some numbers for you guys, um. So, um, actually, I think a couple of people actually, uh, attended this town hall to claim, uh, Zili before I've seen a task like that already. Yeah, so, um, yeah, so basically, Zili has been, um, really, really active since the launch. We currently have fifty-two participants. And that is, uh, that's actually like, uh, really good numbers, uh, we launched, uh, on the seventeenth, that's two days ago. And, um, the sprint is ending on the April first, it will be ending, um, eleven UTC. Uh, so, yeah, so you guys can always check out the, the Discord channel right at the top of the. At the top of the server, so you can actually, uh, you know, see if there's a new task, uh, once there's a new task, when Zili board. Yeah, automatically message gets sent there by the bot, so basically, you can always, um, claim tasks, but there are some tasks that are actually, um, time-based. And, uh, you know, probably like, maybe like fastest, uh, twenty people to like, or ten people to pick up the task before it, um. Disappears, basically. Um, we've had a total of eight hundred and thirty-seven claimed quests, which is actually, you know, really, really good numbers. Um, our Zili sprint is currently on, uh, the, uh, normal account, the basic plan, so. I can see the full analytics to show you the numbers of, uh, people that are actually, um, completing all the tasks and, um, you know. Cause there are other ways to actually end beyond just the task points, if you complete the task exceedingly well, let's say you need a really good comment on the. Medium post or you tweet out like, uh, an announcement that, you know, really hits home, and, uh, yeah, you get extra points for that, you reward it with a star. And you get extra points for that. Um, on the marketing call before the launch, I actually explained how the Zili worked and everything. So basically type of tasks that we're putting off, um, we've been, you know, uh, basically picking up the task, I haven't had that much issues. But, uh, for people that, um, couldn't complete that task or did it incorrectly, we've been, uh, sending out, uh, just. Comments, if someone, uh, comment and gives you a chance to retry, some tasks have cooldown periods. That basically means that you can't try again instantly, so you have to wait either a couple of hours or depends on the task for a day or two. Before you can retry to create a task. Um, yeah, I think we are actually doing well, um, the fact that we're showing on our medium, we've gone from, uh, seventy-two. Members to currently sitting on ninety-seven, ninety-seven followers on our medium page. Also, the Mindplex, uh, podcast account, uh, was quite, was about, uh, seven hundred and sixty-something or some, something. Uh, subscribers before we started the launch and, uh, currently sitting above eight hundred. Um, yeah, I think the followers on Twitter, so actually I'm a bit of a game there, so. Zili is doing smoothly and, um. By next week, I think we'll have, uh, more ambassador scores and, uh, see if there's any changes or any adjustments we need to make, uh. In terms of, uh, making it more engaging for the entire community, so, yeah.
Awesome, good stuff, and also potentially a good experimentation for, um. Uh, later connecting that to, well, more general community outreach and engagement, uh, you have your hand up?
Um, yeah, definitely, so I remember something, so basically, um, looking into the new updates from Zili, we actually have the opportunity to. Start into a whole lot of things, cause now we can create modules. Uh, the first module that we, uh, we have two modules, uh, current working on, which is the Singularity Ambassador Program Module of course. And we are using Mindplex since we have a lot of content, you know, a lot of their podcasts going out, the Dream Wonders and a lot of, uh, content going out. So basically, we have modules on them, so these modules basically contain everything you need to know, any questions that are related to, you know, Mindplex. You can just click on the module and then you can learn everything, but we have trivias, uh, I've experimented with three trivias, a big people all passed, which is nice. So I think we can add more trivias as the quest goes further, because Zili allows us to scale up the level of the person that's completed the point. So basically, I can see from the, um, this, uh, admin end that the, uh, a player has level to level four, level five, level six. And we can, based on this level, we can give them badges, we can give them NFTs, which actual NFTs. Uh, we can also give them all sorts of Discord rules that allows them to see some kind of channels and also some kind of channel to do lots. So basically, we can interact based on even skill set and modules, basically where we can actually educate people, even with the Zili. Very, very fun way to gain point and reward and also level up within the Discord server and you can find your way. Basically, you can learn everything about Mindplex with a module and then find your way into our to contribute or maybe write something or do something. Uh, maybe have a, an idea about like, maybe even improve something we're doing on Mindplex that might get to the community, people are aware about this and like try to engage you on that. So I think it's a, it's a very, very good experiment and I'm actually looking forward to how it turns out.
Awesome, looking forward to that. Uh, makes me wonder if I should, th- there's a limit to this, uh, current round, right? Uh, of, of participants or is that, did that not end up having a limit?
Um, yeah, we actually have the cap, basically we have five thousand, um, tasks that can be comb, um, over the space of two weeks. So every two weeks it resets and, um, but basically, but maybe over. You know, that's one reason why I thought we should actually run it for two weeks versus see just how much engagement we get on our task. So that way we're actually creating, you know, more quality tasks, it's not, instead of like creating just, uh, a lot of tasks for the, to just clean up, so, yeah.
All right, um, yeah, looking at the clock, we're now ten minutes past our slot, um. Quick check on the room if there's any other topics we need to touch on, but if we do shortly, or any quick questions, any comments? There's the time. Um, then one more remark from my side, um. Last week I thought we would be having a bit of a follow-up on a, on a project, uh, unfortunately, well. It's not just because of time, but, um, because of. Well, that will be next week, um, that kind of makes me check the calendar and sees, uh, then I'm sitting, that's. My English is breaking down, as you notice, um, next week is the last town hall of the month, so we have work group updates. So I might need to push that. Other project to maybe a separate session, cause I don't want to wait two weeks, um. So stay tuned for that, pretty much, uh, cause yeah, next week will be, uh, work group update. Done. I think that's a wrap.